Oh.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
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 Yes, that's me.
Hi, Janelle. Thanks for setting this up and joining.
Yeah, no problem. So Bill is driving home. I sent him home. I didn't want him driving home from town hall super late. So he will be joining shortly. Would it be convenient? So I'm getting ready to go here soon. Would it be convenient if I made someone else the host temporarily until he's signed on?
Yes, I was gonna ask if you could make me either the host or the co-host.
I am here.
Oh, Bill is here. Perfect.
Can you make Bill and I both co-host?
Yep, I will do that in the background, but I'll let you guys start. Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle. Thank you for doing your thing.
So we have a few minutes. I'm just gonna go off screen and start. We have a few things I wanted to review before we start.
Hi, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Hi, Mike. Yes, Happy New Year. Good Lord. What a day. Hey Natalie, did you see the flyer? I sent you back for the survey thing.
I saw the email to Dave.
Yeah, well, I did that. I couldn't. I haven't. He might be out of town or something, but can we talk about ASMR briefly for a minute?
Sure.
Just so I can just fire it up. So I don't. I'd like to do it without two documents in it.
Yeah.
You know, so just be one, and it should be easy enough to do, but.
No, I'm not out of town. I don't go anywhere ever. It's fine.
Well.
I mean, let's be real.
That's good. We got everybody. We have Jim, Bill, Bob, Annette, good, Natalie, and Chris is around. I saw him. And James is. Jim, no cats at tonight? Oh, you're muted. Okay, bye-bye. Oh, I gotta put you guys on censor on here. Wait a minute.
I have seven o'clock on my computer here. Bill, are we ready to get started?
We have a full board, Mr. Chair.
All right. I assume we need to record this. Is that your purview, Bill?
It is recording now. It is recording now. And you can share the screen, and so can Mike, or anybody can share a screen.
Understood. Okay, I will open up this planning board meeting. It is January 11th, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. It's 7:01 PM. Since this is a virtual meeting, just a few preliminary matters I'd just like to cover. Just for the record, I'm gonna do roll call. And if you could, just acknowledge that you can hear me and that you can participate in this coming meeting. So first, I will go to Bob Brown. Bob?
Hi, Chris. I can hear you fine. I can participate in everything except for the Parker Street project, for which I have to recuse myself as an abuser to the project.
Thanks, folks. Bill Crenshaw.
Hey, all set.
Thanks, Bill. Natalie?
Hello.
Hi. Jim? Jim, I think you're on mute. Still on mute, Jim. Let's see. I wonder if I can. Let me see. Let's see.
There we go. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Good. I hear you. And do you hear me loud and clear?
I can. Thank you.
And you feel good about participating tonight?
I will be participating with bells on.
Thank you, Jim. And Annette. Hi, Annette.
Hi, Happy New Year, everyone. I am happy to be here and a sound mind and body.
And I asked this question because it's just important to acknowledge that we have accessibility to conduct this meeting and such. Thank you, everybody. All right, I will. Let's open up item number one. Hold on, I just need to pull up my agenda. Item number one, the public hearing for Mainard Crossing. And the petitioner is LPS Maynard LLC 465 Waverly Avenue in Waltham. And this is a petition for requesting a special permit to approve a veterinary clinic at the 129 Parker Street in Mainard Crossing Development. I do. And sorry, I'm not familiar with the other faces here. I assume. Is it Mike and James? Are you part of the applicants here tonight?
Yes, I'm an architect, Mike Petrovic. I'm representing the tenant.
Thank you. And can you just refresh me who the tenant is? The name of the tenant?
Yes, the tenant is LPS Maynard LLC of Waltham, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And is there anyone that's joining you tonight, or will you be representing the applicant?
I'm representing the applicant.
Thanks, Mike. Bill, do you want to provide some background on this for the board? Do you want to frame this at all, or should we just jump to Mike?
Well, I just give a quick background and for anybody watching. The Maynard Crossing project was approved in 2016, and there is a concept plan associated with the project. The that is accompanied by a regulatory framework that's in the zoning bylaws. So it's a little different that when we do any project or anything that requires a special permit in Mainard Crossing, there must be a finding by the board that it is generally consistent with a concept plan. In this particular case, a veterinary clinic are one of the uses. a veterinary clinic are one of the uses that is allowed at the site, and were called out. However, it does require a special permit. So the reason that the applicant is before us tonight is because he's proposing opening a veterinary clinic in the project, and it just requires a special permit. So basically, in this case, consistency with the, there's really no configuration change, so it's really kind of a moot point here, and it would be a question of the use, and if there's anything that the, that the, sorry, I'm getting some feedback here. It would be a question of seeing if there's anything that's site-specific for that use of veterinary clinic, and that would be it.
Thanks, Bill. Just so I understand, there's, there's, under this, this type of hearing for this particular special permit for a designation of use, we don't need to, we don't need to look at traffic. We don't need to look at parking. We don't need to look at building designs or landscaping or anything of that nature. Is that correct?
I, I wouldn't, it, for the building design and things like that, circulation and so on. Typically, you wouldn't, because it was a call night use, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there wouldn't be considerations affecting any of those particular uses. So in the case, for example, of if there was something that was going to have some detrimental effect on the area, or could potentially, you know, the board could ask for verification that you call, some of the things were done with audio and so on. In this case, with a veterinary clinic, it is, it is a medical office, I suppose, that a, there might be some questions the board has about the specific use, but in general, no, I would say, you know, unless there's something that jumps out about this use, it wouldn't be triggering any of the other types of reviews.
Thanks, Bill. Before I turn it over to Mike, is there any questions from the board regarding scope of our review or anything on process-wise? Okay, Mike, if you could, we have some new board members that haven't been involved, or at least just slightly involved with past special permits requests from this project. It might be helpful to orient ourselves where this is occurring on the site, and then, and then dive in from, from that view into, into what this, what this is about. Is that fair?
Okay, great. I'm actually gonna share my screen, so you can see the site plan, and I'll take you kind of through what, what we're talking about here. So I'm assuming you can see my screen. This is the, the site plan of Maynard Crossing. We are talking about building R2 in the northwest corner, far northwest corner of the, of the the development is adjacent to Planet Fitness. Planet Fitness is in the building here. It is a 5,300 square foot facility. In our application, we indicated, not that we have these parking spaces designated to our facility only, but this represents about the number of parking spaces using the Town of Maynard parking requirements that would be allotted to our use, although people visiting the veterinary clinic could use all of this parking in this area, any of these spaces, but not all of it. As I mentioned, it is a 5,300 square foot facility that we're proposing. We are not looking to do any work outside of the existing building whatsoever. There's no exterior facilities that we'll be using at all. If I look at the plan of the building of the, of the unit, it is the end unit. There are windows and doors out the side here. We are using the primary entrance to the the, the unit as our lobby and reception area, a restroom, and then there is a series of exam rooms and treatment rooms leading back to a centralized lab area, if you will, and pharmacy, and then there's a break room, a surgery space, a dental care unit, and office, and then the, we show that, call them kennels, they're actually not, they're holding areas. And basically, no animals are kept overnight or more than overnight unless they've had surgery needs to stay. Typically, animals, if they stay, are there for the day, and then they go home. Typically, it is a come in, get your treatment, and leave. There is typically one veterinarian on, on duty at a time, and then there are two or three or four technicians working with the doctor that's there for the day. This is, as Bill mentioned, this is a permitted use in this, in this facility. It is a very quiet use. It's by appointment only, so therefore, the, the flow through the facility is fairly regulated. It isn't a walk-in facility. So therefore, and it does have set hours. So therefore, it is fairly quiet and consistent with the, with the facility. Basically, as I mentioned, the flow would be through the, the primary entrance, the, there is a side entrance here that, or exit here that is an egress, emergency egressing will also be used. There is a comfort room that for when a pet needs to be euthanized, the family could be here with the pet, and then there's a private way for them to leave and not have to go through the rest of the facility. I'm prepared to answer questions. That is the nature of the project. It's pretty straightforward.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I have two questions, please?
Please go ahead, Jim.
I'll give you both questions, and you can answer them when you have a chance. First of all, I'd like to know the hours of operation, and secondly, I'd like to know the experience of the veterinarian that is going to use this facility. Thank you.
Okay, so the hours are from nine in the morning till six at night. Then maybe one evening when it is open till seven or eight. Typically, it's open till six. They do run a six-day or seven-day schedule depending upon the, the area. As far as the experience of the veterinarian, the company hires experienced, well-seasoned veterinarians. Typically, there are two or three assigned to any one facility. And so therefore, they stay in that, that facility, but it is more than one, so that the person isn't working seven days a week.
Is the experience, I mean, have these people run these sort of things before?
Yes, they have. They have to have experience running, running an independent clinic. They're not, they're not recent graduates or unseasoned people.
Could you cite an example of a place that they now have?
Yes, so they, they just, there's one in Hudson, New Hampshire, that has a veterinarian that has eight years' experience for the primary, and then there are two backups that have four and five years' experience. They've got one in Braintree, Mass. I'm not sure what the veterinarian, the primary veterinarian, the manager has there, or the other two veterinarians that are on staff there.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
First question is, I heard that, that it was stated that there wouldn't be any overnight boarding of animals unless they were recovering from surgery or, or under medical observation. Is that okay to have as a condition?
Is that a question for Bill perhaps?
Or for, is that for?
I'll ask the applicant. I mean, is it, you know, is it too constraining or something? It sounds like, I mean, it sounds like.
I mean, occasionally, I mean, I, from my own experience with pets, and having had four dogs over the course of my adult life, typically, they're in overnight. If there's an extenuating circumstance, they may keep them another night, but that's a rare circumstance. Typically, they wanna move, they want them out, and they want them home with their owner where they're more comfortable. So I, I believe that, you know, to put that as a criteria, as a single night, might be a little bit challenging, just in cases of extenuating circumstance, and then what do they do? Several nights might be more, more reasonable.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just trying to differentiate between boarding without a medical reason and overnight, for however many nights with a medical reason.
From a building, so just so you know, from the building permit perspective, there's a, there's a drastic difference when you, when it's a holding area for, for a short period of time versus a kennel, as a, from a, from an architectural standpoint, building standpoint, is what a code issues that come in that we don't intend to do here, because we're not boarding animals.
Okay, that's fine.
May I jump in?
Chairman? Please, please in it.
I have a question. Emergency cases on pets along the way that say they've been hit by a car. How is there, I mean, after hours, how is that run?
Typically, so from my own experience, having had emergency situations with pets, you don't, you can't come here. Then you need to find one of those 24-hour pet emergency facilities, and you need to go there. They're equipped to handle things very differently.
Okay. So then, is it, the way I understand it is that there will be no emergency availability after hours?
No.
Based on the permit and the zoning and the building permits and everything?
It's really, yeah, it's really about that that's a different facility, and, and they're equipped to handle things much differently.
Bill, I believe you had other questions, Bill Crenshaw?
I have one other question, and I can't believe I'm gonna ask it, but what about the poop and the piddle? The concern of disease running off into the wetlands and the smell affecting the poters?
So they're not outside the building, there's no outdoor facilities, and so therefore, you know, owners are required by law when they're, if they have, if their dog does something or outside the facility to clean it up. That's a, that's a, that's a requirement anyway, regardless of the, if they're just walking their pet through this facility or coming to the, this, the veterinary clinic. Inside, it's dealt with as waste, and it's dealt with sanitary, and it, it falls under that. However, if they're outside and they're walking their pet, and their pet needs to go to the bathroom, then they have to clean it up.
All right, well.
Typically, again, from my own experience, that isn't, that isn't something that typically happens. It's.
I have considerable experience with veterinary clinics, and it's something that commonly happens.
But there is a walking path through there that people are probably walking their pets through there. Not even coming to this clinic. It could be, it could be, it's a, it's a common thing.
Not so much, but if you say the staff will be not walking pets outside of the building, and that can be a condition, then that will be fine.
I think, I think that could be a condition, because they're not doing that.
Okay.
They have these facilities in much more congested settings where that's not an option to walk, walk a pet outside.
All right, I'm good. Thanks.
Yep.
I, so, yeah, please go ahead, Annette, yes.
Um, what about, are there any controlled substances, substances for the pets, and are they locked in the pharmacy, or do they have their own area?
And so for anything that's a controlled substance, it's in a, it's in a, it's in a locked cabinet.
Okay.
They have to follow up. There's, there are state guidelines that, that require how they deal with those kinds of substances.
So the pharmacy is, there's a pharmacy, you're saying, in the, in the bigger area here, in between the hallways, and that's where it would be?
Yes, and there's a locked cabinet.
And it's monitored?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just have one quick question. So I know that you mentioned that on the side of the building, there were a few different windows and maybe in a door, yes?
Yes.
Will that be used? That won't be used by clients, right? That won't be used by people. That will just be for possibly occasionally staff, necessary, but not.
It's emergency egress, but then it's also used after a family is said to deal with euthanization from this comfort room. There will be a door that allows them to access this door, so that they don't have to go back through the waiting room when they're grieving.
Great.
Mike, I, I've been, my experience with, with spec clinics is that there's signs posted outside that say adults may not, you know, urinate or defecate here. I forget the exact language, but essentially, it prohibits dogs from from urinating or defecating with signage. Has that been thought of or discussed with the, with the Maynard Crossing developers?
They haven't asked for that, but they, they may, they, their lease doesn't require that. I mean, they didn't put anything in the lease, but they haven't asked for that. My sense is that that would not be, that would be, I mean, that wouldn't be objectionable to, to my client, that if there were signs posted for people not to take pets back here. But again, this is a public walkway, so I'm sure that there are people that can, that are walking through with pets, so I'm not so sure how you would, how you would do that. But Maynard Crossing, it's, it's a beautiful facility. I mean, I'm, it's really, it seems to be maintained very nicely, even though it's partially still under construction, and so my sense is that if they're, they may be looking for some of that. They haven't asked as of yet.
May I jump in again, please? Where is your waste, like a dumpster or waste removal where you put all the waste?
So that, that stuff is, that stuff is on, there is, that's provided on site, and I'm not sure where. I have to look at the site plan. I'm not sure exactly where that's located. Looks like it's right here.
And, and that's, of course, gated?
Yes, it is.
It's actually located on the north side. There's a pair of dumpsters there.
Oh, here you go, right here. And right here.
So that's your own. It's, it's for, so anybody, that's for your own.
It's for this entire building. This is a huge facility, so they've got strategically placed trash centers for dumpsters. Okay, medical waste has to be, they deal with medical waste for pickup on their own. Medical waste is not dealt with that way.
So, so that was gonna be my question, Mike. Could you just talk me through the medical waste and the biohazard waste to your knowledge?
All of that is maintained, is contained on site, and it's, they, they have a company that picks that up for them.
Is it contained outside at all, or is it all contained inside?
Inside. Nothing is outside.
And, and do they have, they probably have sharp needle bins and things of that nature that also needs to be maintained. Is any of that hazardous material being outside at all, or is that all?
No, it's not. No, they, by law, they're not allowed to do that. That has to be maintained in a very controlled environment, similar to a, you know, a human physician's office or medical facility. That has to be controlled really strictly.
And, and. If I, if I understand, the only waste that leaves the building unattended would be regular disposal trash of a sort of, you know, an office from an office setting or a food waste setting. Was that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Bill, now, sir, back to the signage question. Is, is this something that we would want to consider as a, as a condition, or I don't, I don't, any, you know, just looking for some guidance on this?
Yeah.
What are, what are your thoughts?
Well, it, I mean, Mike is right. The property managers do a wonderful job over there, and I'm sure if there was repeated dog problems, it would be an issue. On the other hand, it's a lot easier to address it now with a simple sign. You know, if it was something that was consistent, you know, that didn't look out of place, and just saying, please, you know, reminding pet owners not to walk their pets there, or to clean up after their pets, I should say. Um, that's, that's, I could see it both ways on that, but I, I, somebody's gonna do it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see, in my mind, it's hard for me to stipulate what that condition would look like without talking to the, the developers, the development group itself.
Yeah.
Like, I would like their feedback before, you know, I try to come up with any language here. But it's something that, it's just something I would wanna consider, and I don't know if we're gonna wrap this up tonight or not. I don't know, you know. But, what do you think, Bill?
Regarding the sign or wrapping it up?
Should we talk to the developer, or, or should we? So another, another option, I'm in, in the back of my brain, is to, well, here's my question. If we see, if, if we're, if there's notable issues. well, here's my question, if we see, if, if we're, if there's notable issues later on, after, after we issue a special permit, I'm just assuming that we do, if we do, let's assume we issue a special permit down the road, there are issues with that, that we decide that signs should be required, is that something that we could ask the applicant to come back in to discuss to make it a condition or?
Yeah, sure you could, you sure you could, we could, we could, probably the easiest way to do it without holding up anything, but, but making sure we address the issue would be that, um, we agree or, or, or um, make a point to, uh, periodically check in with the property manager, I could do that, uh, as a condition of approval, uh, to see if there's been any problems for like, like a probation period or whatever, and if so, just, you know, it's our, it's our special permit, and if we decide it really was a problem and there there was a mess, you know, out there, then I'm sure the applicant and the, um, the, between the applicant and the property manager, they'd understand the need to post it, and we would just ensure that it was done, nobody would wanna have to pull a permit or anything or revoke a permit or anything like that, but I, I think they would understand that, but
I believe that's the, I believe that's the, that's the nature of a special permit too, is that on these types of facilities and it allows you the opportunity to visit issues as you go, as, as they arise much easier than if it's just as, just a, a, an accepted use.
Maybe, maybe an alternative, Mr. Chair, would be, uh, we said, uh, we've, come back in a year or, you know, we could just say come back for a year, don't have to, don't have to file an application or anything, but just come and, uh, we can just, uh, ascertain if there's been any issues and we can reach out to the, uh, property management staff to think.
Could we, could we just have the, the condition be that the, um, management group and the applicant report back and say three or six months after opening and regarding the condition itself?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I, I don't necessarily need to march people back in, I, I see, I see it as minor, I think, I think we all get the concept here. Yeah, but I'd like, I'm happy to hear other board members to hear what they think, and my apologies for the dog barking in the background, I think that's
It's appropriate in this.
Appropriate for this.
Really adds to the ambiance for this.
Yeah.
For this.
Yeah, I do think your suggestion is pretty good, Mr. Chair, if, if, uh, the rest of the board likes that, I, I like that.
So I'll open it back up to the board about their thoughts, not just about this, but any other conditions that they think may be appropriate for this.
May I jump in again, please, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm, um, Mike, is that your name is Mike? I just wondered, you know, like a, a little, if, if a, a pet has to stay overnight or a few pets have to stay overnight, is there someone there with them? And if they have to go, say, outside to the bathroom, where do they go outside to go to the bathroom? Is there an area just for them?
They, if a pet stays overnight, they actually deal with the waste inside, so they don't take them out when they have to stay, if they're, if they're overnight, they're usually on an IV. Um, they're dealing with some complications that don't allow them to be put on a leash and taken outside overnight, and yes, someone's there with them all night.
We don't wanna leave them alone.
No, well, no, and you're not, legally, you're not allowed to.
Right.
Any other thoughts from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please, Jim.
Uh, I'm pleased to see this, uh, facility coming into the town of Maynard, uh, Maynard is a pet-friendly town, as I think we all will agree, uh, it's a dog town, dogs are uh, being walked early in the morning, late at night, all times, um. It's nice to see that Maynard, Maynard will have a, uh, a facility for the uh, care of, uh, our beloved pets, uh, where we won't have to go out to Stowe or to Acton or to Concord or some other place, we'll have a place right here in town, so I'm very pleased to see these people coming on board.
Thanks, Jim, for those nice words, appreciate it. And, and the other consideration, board members? Uh, so, the, the only condition I would like to add to this would be that the applicant and the property group just report back uh, within six months of opening, just to check on, um, the condition of the exterior of the property. And that report can go to staff, and that's it, and then Bill will notify us of anything that we need to be notified on. Does anyone have any objections to that, that condition?
Not at all.
I'm ready to make a motion, I, please stop me if, if there's other questions, but I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Uh, just one question, Mr. Chair, so I, I'm clear, they, uh, the applicant in, in six months, uh, of opening would I, it would handle it, the reviewer would hit, be handled at staff level, just to ensure, just to check that there's no problem?
Yes, okay. Yes, so my motion would be
Chris, one other thing.
Yes, please.
Just to clarify, is it okay if there's also a condition that the staff will not take the pets outside for exercise or relief?
Um, let's talk about that. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's rewind that, um, can, Mike, can you remind me what your thoughts were on that?
So the staff will not take people, take pets outside to fully, um, they, they manage that internally, so if a pet is there um, they're in, they're in, being held, they're in a kennel, and, um, they will, they will handle that internally. Um, the only thing you really, it's hard, since there is a walking path there, um, it's hard to, I mean, I, the, I mean, people are walking their pets there anyway, um, it's hard to limit that, um. I, I'm not sure how you would do that. Because, I mean, people can walk through there with it, with a dog, if they live there, there could be someone that walks there every day and with their same dog or people, I mean, I think it's hard to do that when there's a walking path there.
Understood that.
I think you could say that staff should not be taking, that the, the staff and the facility should not be taking pets or animals outside for, to relieve themselves.
I believe that was what Bill Crenshaw was asking, the one that Bill Crenshaw was asking, just, primarily just about staff, is, is that correct, Bill?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, I don't have
If I added a condition that said, uh, the clinic staff shall not, uh, walk animals outside for
to relieve themselves, or I don't know, Bill, you'll come up with that wording.
Right, sure, oh, yes, oh, yes.
Um, yeah, Mike, I, I get it, like, we're, we're not responsible for public here, the, you know, the point is just to you know, just to have some, some type of, some, some type of bounds, bounds here, that's all, um, I
I agree, and I think that's very acceptable.
Yeah, and, you know, if members of the public walk by and they, they allow dogs to, to relieve themselves and, you know, the property owner, the developer understa, you know, like, that's, that's not what we're trying, that's not here, we're not making you responsible for the public, so I, I wanna clarify that.
And, yeah, again, it is a nice facility and I think everyone there wants to keep it a nice facility.
Okay, so, the, I'm, I'm okay with that condition, so Bill, two conditions, one is about, uh, staff report, check back in with staff in six months. Second condition is that staff from the facility, um, shall not, uh, walk animals uh, for, for bathroom relief.
Got it.
So I'll make a motion, uh, Bill, does the motion to approve the special permit?
The, um, yeah, it's in the staff report, but we wanna make, uh, that it, uh, see here, I'll, I'll, I'll share.
Yeah, I have it up here too, uh, so it's a determination that it meets the criteria for special permit as described in ten point four. And then we vote to determine an issuance of a special permit.
Exactly.
Get that correct, okay, so
You are, you are correct.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, no, I'll make a motion that the this applicant meets the special permit criteria, criteria described in section ten point four of the zoning bylaws. And I, I believe we can vote on that one first, is that correct, Bill?
Y- yeah, you could just say, yeah, you can vote, uh, uh.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill, so we have a, we have a motion in a second, um, we'll do roll call, uh, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Annette, you're voting on this one. You have to, Ned, I think you were late there for a second, yeah.
Did we change our?
Sorry, yes, yes, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm also a yes, so for the record, that's five zero for yes, and, uh, Bob, Bob was recused from this vote. Did I get that right, Bob? I heard that at the beginning, did I get that correct? Bob's still with us. Bill, that's right, isn't that right, Bill? Bob was recused from this?
That's correct, Bob had recused himself, thank you.
Thank you. Um, he was a neighbor, uh, and then, so the second part of this would be a motion to issue this special permit with the conditions listed, condition one, generally speaking, was that the applicant would report back to town staff in six months regarding, um, uh, you know, the, the use of, um, uh, the outside area for, for, for pet relief. And, um, the condition two was that staff from the veterinary clinic would not be uh, walking animals for their relief. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Jim, we'll, we'll call again, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so Bill, that's five zero for yes. Um, thank you, Mike, for your time tonight, thank you for your presentation, and if you could let the applicant know, best of luck.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, for your time and consideration of the project, we appreciate your effort, thanks.
Thanks, Mike, take care.
Thank you.
So Chris, is the hearing closed?
Um, so, Bill, you're, you're better at this than me, can you, can you just advise me on protocol or?
Yeah, it was, the public hearing, we, we, yes, you have to, we didn't vote to close the public hearing, Bill's right.
Um, so, that requires a motion to close, is that it?
I would say so, that, uh, probably Jim Coleman probably is more familiar with that than I am.
Jim, yes, you, you, you need to move, I, I'll move to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jim, I second it. All in favor, uh, Annette?
Hi.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes too. Hearing is closed, thanks, Bill Crenshaw, for the reminder, we wouldn't want that hearing to continue on for the next decade. Okay.
Okay, thank you for that, guys. Uh, we have a set of minutes too, Mr. Chair, also.
Alright, let's take a look at the minutes then, everyone.
Bill, you're still sharing screen.
Oh. Oh, crannies. Well, this is a different one, I'll get it in a minute, they're sorry. Oh, don't end the meeting, wait. Oh, okay. Where did it go on this one? Um. Wow.
Usually up top.
Yeah, oh, there it is, I, I see it's on the other here, it is, I got it, sorry about that, it's a little different on my iPad, okay, there we go. There you are. Oops, okay, thank you. Okay, so we're the meeting of twelve, the meeting of twelve fourteen are the minutes that we're discussing.
I don't have any comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minutes.
And for clarity, that was to accept the minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Bob.
Thank you, um, I, I believe there's an important omission from the minutes on the third page. Um, it indicates that we voted three in favor and um, and two against on the motion, but the motion is not recorded. So it doesn't indicate what we voted on.
Oh, that could, okay, which one?
I fell for that one too, Bob, it's, it's just before. There's a paragraph. Just scroll up a little bit and you'll see the motion.
Go to bottom of page two, the motion is there in italics, indented in.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I had the same, I had the same sort of. I read it last night.
Okay.
If we haven't had a second, I'll second.
It's seconded, um, any other, any other discussion, comments, questions about the minutes?
Was that Bill seconded? I didn't catch that.
Yes, Bill Crenshaw seconded. Okay, all in favor, uh, roll call since we're virtual here, um, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yep.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, um, and so it's five zero, Bill.
Excellent, thank you.
So that's item one. Just give me a second to get back to the agenda. Okay, so those were the items for tonight, now we have planning update. Bill, there's, there's been a number of developments, um, can we, before we dive into all, all of them, can we just list out the, the topics that you wanted, would like to brief us on tonight?
Um, I'd like to discuss, uh, a joint meeting with a select board, um, within which there will be a presentation by MAPC on the Powder Mill, uh, corridor report. Uh, the select board has indicated that they would be fine with coming to one of our meetings, um. So I would like to discuss that, the problem with that is what we always have, is if the meeting gets, you know, backed up or something like that, but, um, so that would be one thing I'd wanna discuss, I'd wanna give you a little brief update on our home, uh, occupancy, uh, bylaw, trade shop rewrite. Uh, new submittal for Maynard Crossing, um, I'd like to talk, I just update you on, um, anything else is, uh, I, I, I don't think there's anything else that's, um, I would really need to go over, I think.
Um, how, what about Powder Mill, we, we, didn't we receive the final?
Oh, yeah.
Final version of the Powder Mill corridor initiative?
Not the, the, the final draft, so I, I sent it around and, uh, if everybody, I sent it around last week, I got some comments back, thank you for that, if you haven't, I am still compiling them, so if you wanna take a peek at it and send it to you tomorrow, it would help, um, also, um, I'm just about done with the, uh, writing the, uh, grant request for the second part, I'm calling it, uh, now phase two, cause I got myself so confused, but it would be Powder Mill corridor study phase two. So if you have any comments, if you could please get them back to me, um, it'd be good.
Alright, let's, can you tell us about, let's start with, um, yeah, let's start with that, um, is there anything else to, anything else to discuss on that front, Bill?
Not really, um, the, 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 in our grant, uh, we haven't spent down everything. And, uh, so we have, they do it by, um, rather than just cash, they do it by, um, in-kind services. So we have a, a presentation which MAPC, you know, one hour presentation or whatever we want would be willing to do, I think, I think that kind of stuff is always good, you know, to have it coming from outside, um, somebody outside doing it, so if we want, if the board was good with that, I'll set that up, if you guys are all good with that.
That was our strategy, was to use that, I believe we talked about it in the fall, isn't that right, Bob? That, that was the strategy, we, we liked. So, um, when, when should, when, when should we expect this to occur? Would this be at our regular meeting or would this be at, um, separate meeting?
Um, I would like to keep it a regular meeting, um, uh, let me just see how, give me a day or two and I'll shoot out some dates, I don't, you know, cause they, they wanna do it, uh, I think before March, um, and Um, and we have a couple of other things going on. But let me look at our agendas to see how they shape up for, you know, caseload on there. I can get that straight the next day or so, and I can check with all of you. We also have our home occupancy special planning board meeting is February ninth. And that's a Wednesday. And the only thing on the agenda will be the home occupation, home occupation, public workshop. So,
that that's a planning board meeting, correct?
It, it is a planning board meeting. It is not a hearing.
And it's not a hearing. It's not a joint meeting. It's just simply a planning board.
Right. Yeah, I suspect the zoning board will want to come, and I'm going to, you know, I'll check with them and they can go ahead and post it, you know, that there'll be, they'll have a quorum there. But the purpose is just to gain, you know, basically, public input. And, and then, once, well, actually, Bill could probably fill you a little better than I can. But, but I think the general idea is that once we get input and a couple of, you know, identify what some of the concerns, issues are, then we could start to really craft something in earnest. Isn't that the way you see it, Bill? On that one, I mean?
Yes, fingers crossed. All depends on what we learned from the forum.
It would be helpful for me to, would it, would it be possible to have, for me to catch up with you, Bill Nemser and Bill Crenshaw and the member from the zoning board ahead of this meeting, so I understand what your perspectives are before I proceed? Is that possible? Is that allowed? Is that, can we do that?
Yeah, it's fine with me. I'd have to check with my other teammates. I have one other one here. But I think, I think, we're trying to meet basically every Wednesday morning. And I, it's fine with me. Bill, would you have any problem with that?
Sure. He's the boss. That's fine.
Just, if I understand your perspective, it helps me navigate the waters a little bit better. So, that's all. Background always helps.
And the other thing is, we we have some information going out. We have I had, we're starting to get some comments and questions and, you know, things get, you know, they can go one way or the other. So, we want to make sure the information gets out there. But I think we're in a good I'm happy with what we've done so far.
And so, we'll talk more about it. Let me know when it's best to meet with you guys. I do some questions about the structure of the meeting, you know, should we provide like an introduction and, you know, how do we frame it ahead of time and, you know, things of that nature. And then, obviously, so I just have questions on, how to best proceed.
So, yeah. Yeah, Wednesday, typically, it's Wednesdays at eight AM on Zoom, so. It's just us doing our I got some guys that enjoy the geeky planning stuff as much as I do. We have fun. We have a good time with it. Okay, anything else to add, Bill Crenshaw? On that?
Um, just, Bill Nemser, when's the survey going out?
It's out, uh,
Hasn't been posted on those.
Yeah. Any minute. Yeah. Natalie may be just the punch on that because I'm having some problems with the webmaster, but we'll fix that. And Natalie's going to post it as well, right, on something?
I will. I will, yeah.
And we're already getting responses, so, but yes, the answer, Bill, it should be any minute to the world.
Okay, so far, we've gotten this many.
Six. There you go. Six.
I'm one of them. I didn't, I didn't want.
I didn't take.
Well, it was, I thought you asked to take it. I thought that was a request.
No, we did. We did.
I'll get my husband to take it, too. Then you'll be at seven.
Yeah, there you go. We are going to have more. I guarantee you, I guarantee you, we'll get more than seven.
We'll start a pool next meeting.
I still have the record for the bike share. I have like three hundred and seventy or something for bike share.
That was.
Is this something that that we could post on the Facebook boards for the major groups?
All being done, yeah. All being done. There's just a minor hiccup that Natalie and I discussed yesterday. But not to worry. Throw me life preservable.
Okay. So, one item on the list was a preview of a Maynard Crossing applicant.
Yes, yes. You may recall, we had, now, it seems like, good lord, a year ago, maybe. Right after, well, I don't know what it was, but building R three is one of the, was going to be one of the big box stores. And that is in the area just in front of the Planet Fitness area there. It is now being proposed as building R three A and three B. They have taken and going from the big box model, they wanted to make it into smaller for the potential for smaller tenants, which they feel is their, their market has evolved to that. In what's kind of neat about it is in between the buildings, they've put like a patio area in there. It, if you can recall, it used, R three used to have seating on the perimeters, which was fine, but I mean, but now they've moved that all inside. So, it's kind of like a little, like a court in there. It's kind of neat. There's a reduction of square footage both overall. And in, there's a reduction in impervious surface there. They have added some parking spaces. And I think, I think that's about it. I have it all packed up and I'll be routing it out probably, if not tomorrow, certainly Thursday. You'll have it. It'll be in your mailboxes. And if you want, anybody wants hard copies, you know, just like, I'm just kind of putting that out there. I should have said that earlier. Anybody wants hard copies, make sure you let me know and I'll print them. Because, you know, a lot of times, you don't need to print everything on it. So, but if you want it, just let me know and I'll get it for you. We'll get it to you. So, anyway, it's, that's, I've got that one coming. That'll probably be the first meeting in February. And I think that is it for you guys.
At the moment, I think. I think in weeks past, back in December, you briefed us on being an MBTA community. Is there anything to brief us on further now or is it still pending, Bill, at this time?
Tomorrow, well, as right now, everything, we're in a let me back up. Everybody, does anybody not understand what the MBTA community is, before I launch into it?
You can just cover it again for me. I'm very forgetful.
All right. There is, the state has created a piece of legislation that goes on to the chapter forty A, our growth management laws, that says that MBTA or MBTA served communities must provide a certain level of zoned districts at a high density. And in their description, that they would like to see fifteen units per acre minimum. Now, that is, is one, that's, that's in a nutshell, that's what it is. Their stick is that if you don't provide this by a certain date, you will not be eligible for specific grants, things like Mass Works and some of the others. So, there, I have already been on the phone with a couple of my colleagues from D H C D. I spoke with M A P C this morning and Magic, our local subdivision of M A P C. Everybody's, you know, upset, as you can imagine, particularly the small towns are really upset. And there's a number of reasons for that. And so, what that means to us is that there is a comment period that is open and will be closed the end of March. So, before the D H C D has any regulations that are in place, they want to get the feedback. We have to also give a presentation on what the MBTA community feedback is going to be to the select board. So, my goal is to try to gather from all of us and I've got a lot already that I'm, and so, maybe the way to do will be, we'll send it around. Everybody can see what they think. But I have a lot of problems with it. I think it's, I usually don't crutch about this kind of thing, but it's just, it's simply not practical for Maynard. And I am afraid that we've done such good work. I mean, we could always do better, but we've, I think we've done a really good job with trying to create affordable housing and trying to do the right thing with density. And I'm proud of all the stuff that we've done. And our board, good heavens, we've done it on almost every project now. So, this is kind of like, I look at it as a bit unfair. We can, I did have a chance to talk to Bill Crenshaw a little bit about it. And there's some, I mean, there's some stuff we can do. And we will do it, and we'll make sure we're okay. But, but really, I don't like, I don't think the legislation is going to do what they think it's going to do in a community like ours. I mean, for example, we've got our Powder Mill Road Corridor coming up, right? We could put a overlay district, you know, and perhaps we've made that, you know, suitable for MBTA level zoning that would work for that. But we don't, but like, they have things like, for example, you have to have fifty contiguous acres. Well, what the heck? I mean, that's not, we don't even have that. And, and so, there's things like that that I'm going to, I've already, I've already complained more than I typically do in, to anybody, you know, that I deal with it. And everybody else has the same issue. But I really, it really got under my skin because we've been, I think we've been trying to do everything the right way. We just adopt their housing production plan, you know, all this thing. And I get what the state's doing and I admire it. But it's got to be proportionate to the community. And it doesn't seem that it's going to be fair to us. And I can't.
What's, what's, what's the, I'm still slow to learn these types of things, Bill. What's, what's the real challenges for us? Obviously, you mentioned the fifty acre, the fifty acre contiguous issue, which there's not fifty contiguous acres of anything in Maynard as far as I can tell. And maybe the river, but that might be it, if you count it all. But, um, you mentioned the fifteen units per acre as well. Can you just like lay out what the real problems are for us with this?
Well, yeah, the first problem, of course, is let's stipulate water and sewer has to be addressed first. All right, we don't. So, if we put in a overlay district, you know, anybody who came in, we have to say, we can't do it, you know? Now, I thought at first, that could be something, that could be something that could work in our favor. It could be some sort of leverage that we, you know, use to say, okay, hey, wait a minute. We're with you, state, on trying to come up with, you know, the balance of housing that's appropriate, that we need, the proper densities that you're requesting, et cetera. Our main obstacle, let's say, for example, are water and sewer. Well, okay, we're willing to, we're trying to go and meet your objectives. But you need to help us. And so, something like a Mass Works grant would get us to a level where we could support this type of initiative, which is, you know, their highest priority right now, and help us to serve our community in appropriate levels that we need to. So, I thought that that was a good way to work with it. Between that, between the Powder Mill Corridor, I thought we could come out with that ahead. And we still could come out ahead. I'm confident. This is, this is not going to stand the way it is. I don't think. But that's my hope, is that we dovetail this all nicely together with our Powder Mill overlay. We ensure that the, we've done all we can to make sure the regulations are proportionate to the community size. And then, hopefully, we're in position A for our Mass Works grant. We've got to get that to do much of anything. So, that, that's my hope with it. Now, um, like I said, is it a meeting today? And there's a meeting tomorrow. If anybody wants to come, with D H C T, D H C D, it's at one o'clock on Zoom, if anybody would like to tune in. And I'm sure we'll hear from everybody else. I'll send you the links tomorrow, if I didn't already. I'm not sure if I did. It's rooted in something good, and I hate when stuff like that happens, you know, where, you know, it's rooted in good. But it's just not, it's going to be, I don't know what we can do, you know? So, anyway, I would like to, I'd like to keep this very close. And my goal would be, how do we, you know, turn this into our advantage and solve several problems with it?
Thanks, Bill. Any questions from the board on any of those items? Okay, on a different topic, I was reviewing the upcoming, the documents for an upcoming applicant, the food co-op. And it occurred to me that I don't have a good sense of how our complete streets policy should be applied or the intent of it. So, I wanted to get some feedback from Bill Nemser on like, what's the appropriateness of applying, sorry for the dog. What's the appropriateness of applying complete streets for different, different types of projects? Because I just don't have a sense of how it could, can be implemented from, even from a strategic standpoint. So, I asked Bill to an email if at some point we could get some guidance on that, Bill. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not. But it's just something that it's been in the back of my brain. Also, welcome to hear any other thoughts from the board members on what complete streets means and what can we, how can we do it?
Well, um, so far as what it means, there's a couple of ways to, that I might be able to help with that. I, we have, we had a presentation that was done when we did our Complete Streets pilot program, probably about four or five years ago, which is still pretty good. And it is just a, it's a presentation. It really is kind of nice. And I'll make a point to send that around tomorrow. But I look at it, complete streets as more of a philosophy than an actual thing. It could be, depending on this place where you are, it may be different one thing. But in another place, it may be another component. But in general, it's to promote, you know, pedestrian cyclist safety, not non-motorized vehicular circulation. And it's the idea that basically, everybody has the rights to use the street, not just a motor vehicle. It can, like, complete streets can, it doesn't just have to be like a bike lane or something like that. It can be like, like, we just got the grant complete streets for our curb bump outs, you know, for both traffic calming and for help ADA compliance, things like that. It could be, you know, like a crosswalk. It could be widening a sidewalk, you know. So, but basically, I always thought of it as looking at the project area for everybody's transportation needs, from your foot, from your feet to your, you know, your bikes and, of course, your cars, too. The, we adopted a complete streets resolution about 2013. We adopted a complete streets policy probably 2016 or so. And what those were are basically just, it's select, I think it was just a select board adopted it. And it acknowledged that the town is going to try to meet incorporate components of um, incorporate components of complete streets uh, wherever possible. The big problem, as you can imagine right away, is that DPW like doesn't have the budget to do everything that we would like to do. So part of the way we achieve some of these goals, if if uh, there is um, say, a a new project comes in and it um, i- it offers an opportunity to upgrade to complete streets uh, uh, components, they'll try to do it. The last, like, like, for example, we did it with Maynard Crossing. Um, they, I can't remember all the stuff they did, but they put in some bike lanes. It wasn't as much as I would have liked probably on that, but they did put in uh, some um, some um, pedestrian components and there was a lot of stuff done for vehicular improvement, of course, as well. Uh, we've we did it with, we did some I guess, you, you know, I didn't think about this till now, but I guess you would call even like when we, when we link up with like the rail trail for pedestrians, that would be a complete streets component, I would consider. You know, some sort. So the question that that has been, I I've been getting like, you know, a lot of of inquiries on and I wrote you guys a little bit about it. Was when we're doing mitigation and when we're doing amendments. I I I need to come up with something that's more concrete and that's purport, that allows me to be proportionate or allows us to be proportionate. Uh, and by that, I mean, um, if somebody comes in and they have an approved site plan and they come in and they do something, an amendment that's just, you know, minimal. I- i- is there ex, i- i- is it appropriate, is it in a town's best interest to say, okay, we're going, you know, we we feel that in order to renew this permit, there needs to be an an additional um, I I, you know, what whatever improvement paid for in order to get this approval, like maybe and in some cases, maybe it is, and maybe this. Um, and so an upcoming project, which I I think you know about, um, where we have a tenant uh, moving into a space. That is being built out for the tenant, uh, has expressed, there was concerns expressed that um, you know, what will the scope of the entire review be and what will any it, you know, what will the proposed mitigations be and and then is it still going to be feasible? And I thought that was, you guys understand the project I'm talking about. Um, and there are improvements that are are being proposed that are definitely in our interest. Um, but that was something that I'm struggling with. And when we have a new project to ground up, you know, that's um, something that I'm hoping we can accomplish with the powder mill uh, the quarter overlay. I was hoping that we would have like blue, like templates or blueprints for basically what we want to see for streetscape, what we want to see for um, river access and so on. And we could say to a developer who's creating a new when a new project, hey, put, you know, as part of your approval, we want to see you streetscape this consistent with our guiding or whatever it is and that sort of thing. Um, and so but does that mean that, you know, um, let's let's stipulate that when we're reviewing for any sort of amendment or any sort of uh, you know, um, approval. Excluding the the, obviously the safeties issues all have to be addressed and 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 things like um, like ADA uh, things like that. Of course, they have to be done, but there's, it's not always so cut and dry. It's not easy to figure out with um, some of these projects and and as we get infill and stuff, I guess depending where it is, may make a difference too. So I I guess I'm not, I don't know, I can't, I don't think I can be any clearer than the.
No, it it, this is, this is what I was struggling with before. I was just thinking back on previous decisions that we approved under under site plan review, cause I'm, you know, when I read the the complete streets policy, it says the planning board approval process now requires all projects subject to site plan review to address complete streets elements for non-automobile transportation circulation. So I'm thinking about like one fifteen Main Street. Right, um, what was, how did we, I don't recall how we were approached complete streets for something like that. Was it just? I mean, it was, was it inherent in the discussion? Cause I don't feel like at any point we're like, this, this addressed complete streets. I can kind of see why there's a bike path and there's some improvements in the sidewalk. But I don't remember it all being ever explicitly called out. Does that make sense?
I don't know that it was called out. Uh, I don't know that we actually said complete streets, but it's it's I mean, I could think of offhand, like, for example, we'll start with reduction of parking. I mean, parking was reduced right there. So that right away is is, you know, a a complete street component. Uh, you know, connecting to the rail trail, connecting to uh, offering an alternative to residents to having a vehicular lifestyle by allowing this level of density in the middle of town where you can walk around and so many things.
And there was a bike rack that was approved.
Bike rack is, yeah.
That's, is that part of it as well? Things like that count? Okay.
Sure, I mean, you can always, you can always do things, but that, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, I get it. Um, and we, we don't look at complete streets like, I mean, okay, perfect. You get a special permit for a vet. Now, this is in Maynard Crossing, but if we get a special permit for um, you know, something that's non.
Well, let's take another example. There's, there's the, another application coming in for Maynard Crossing and I believe that includes site plan review because there's a change of condition of the the the, with something to do with the building, right? So that's site plan review. Do we look at complete streets for something like that?
I would, I would say that we we would want to look at the circulation, but I I don't think it would be I I I don't think it would be appropriate to say, okay, we need you to put a new uh, bike lane i- i- in, you know, down in in another location or something like that, offsite or something like that. I think that would be asking for trouble.
Um, and and my apologies to the rest of the board if um, if 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 this isn't interesting, I'm happy to just talk to Bill about this afterwards, but these are just questions I kept coming back to when I was reviewing of different site plans and I it's turned my head around what complete streets looks like and how we can help.
If I can, just a couple of quick comments. I mean, complete streets is really exterior to the site. And within the site, it's just the connections to those exterior accommodations for all ages and all abilities in non-automobile tra- transportation. But I think the problem is, you know, when somebody does a traffic study, they should not be doing a traffic study. They should be doing a transportation study.
Ooh.
And they should be looking at cars, walking and bikes in at equal um, effort. And then we can actually have that conversation, but we've been ducking around it on all our other projects. And a lot of times it's like, yeah, it's good, or you know, oh, this handicap ramp needs to be fixed. Yay, alright. That's appropriate for the size of the project, but it just needs to be presented and discussed by the applicants, that's all.
Yeah, I, that's well said, Bill, cause that's, I kind of, that's kind of what I've been, that's not what I've been thinking. I think that kind of fills in something that it's been missing for me is that it hasn't been kind of front and center and explicit in the past and maybe I think, maybe we could do better doing that. I'm happy to try doing a little bit better on that front, just to make it explicit. Um, I don't know if our asks are gonna be any different, but I think at least you know, what I'd like, I look, I look ahead a year, I want to be able to say to others, here's how we looked at and 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 promoted complete streets through our work. So that's kind of my vision on how to, I want to be able to say that, so.
When we um, our planning board regulations specifically talk about the kind of stuff that, you know, we want to see. And I think i- i- it probably in like a case of a larger project, it's my fault because I don't necessarily call out that I, and 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 sometimes we perhaps we haven't done as good as as we should be. But um, it is at, certainly at the forefront and when we review a project. Um, we try to take all that into account in our review process, but we don't make it part of the applicant's presentation necessarily. And of course, it depends on the project, you know, it may not be, the vet is not going to come in and make complete streets, you know, project, but but I I I hear you coming and.
It's also not site plan review, so that was just for a special permit.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no, it wasn't appropriate there, but for site plan review, yeah.
Fair enough.
But I get your point, Bill. There's places where it doesn't, it's hard to see where it's appropriate. But I I'm not, I don't want to suggest that we haven't been doing it. What I want to suggest is that I want to just raise the awareness of it and be able to say this is how we addressed it.
I guess that that that's absolutely.
So thanks, thanks for everyone's patience as I uh, as I stumble through all this, guys. Um, and I know I took up twenty minutes every time with just my questions and um, any other thoughts on this? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you raised it because it's a uh, a really good topic. Um, when they did the Parker Street Development, you know, my my understanding is that those flashing crosswalk lights were put in as part of that project, is that correct now? And the reason I mention it is because um, I think those kind of lights are just terrific as far as making, you know, that area the road crossable. Um, you have the whole um, the entire, the neighborhoods on the other side of the street from Parker Street Development, where
Yeah.
it's all residential. So when I see kids riding bikes trying to cross the street there and it's a very busy road, you know, that that kind of thing is just like a a terrific you know, add-on to a project if you can get it.
Indeed.
You know, certainly, those are expensive lights. You know, and something like a small project may not be able to carry that, but I think what you're saying, Chris, is like, just keeping our our eyes open and thinking about it. Okay, if it's like that, well, you know, could it just be at least at a minimum a crosswalk?
That's well said, Bob, and it reminds me of what Bill Crenshaw said earlier about taking it from a vehicle traffic study to a, can you say it again, Bill? It was not a traffic study, but a
Multi-modal transportation study, yeah.
Like, to me, that, that's what, that's the outcome we can have if we just raise the awareness.
I, I think that's a great idea.
Um, uh, last thing on this, it it's always helpful for me to understand what to request of applicants if I kind of have a vision and strategy on what can be completed for complete streets. So for example, um, anything in the powder mill corridor, if if, you know, and 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 now and I get why Bill Nemser, you want to have this this vision for powder mill corridor because it allows us be able to communicate. You know, even tie back to complete streets. Um, how how does, how does a powder mill corridor develop complete streets overall? How does that happen for us, Bill? Is that Mass Work grants? How do we, how do we complete that street?
I think the first thing to do is decide what we want, like, and that's what we're trying to do now, exactly.
And you say we're, we're trying to do that through the powder, powder mill corridor initiative and then
Yeah.
meeting coming up and through that whole process, right?
Yeah, but I think we started it early when we had the um, we had the outreach meetings for the powder mill corridor over um, I guess it was about a year ago, maybe a little longer. And um, because we have a lot of n- n- not just neighborhoods, we have other stakeholders in there and and my thought was, let's, let's if anything, we'll just uh, make sure everybody has too much information or is too aware of stuff, so nobody's surprised and let's find out what they would like to see. And a couple, you know, I don't Bill Crenshaw may know the numbers, I can't remember, but uh, on, in the case of Powder Mill Road, it is, it it, we've had some, um, it's very dangerous. We've had a a number of accidents and I don't know. You know, I don't have numbers or anything like that, but but it's enough where the the neighborhoods and and the stakeholders are aware that this is not a place to enjoy pedestrian amenities or site bicycling amenities. Um, so having the lo- local support there and building us so that people are aware what we're trying to do, I think is pretty early, i- i- it's something you really want to establish early. And then if we could get, the more money we can get budgeted from the town to at least get things going, the better. Um, and I, and I um, you know, I could see the value uh, in you know, the the town coming out with some basic designs i- in small segments somewhere and say, okay, this is what we want to replicate or whatever. I'm talking, you know, for, like, again, like a template or something like that. When we have a major project come in, I, you know, like this um, uh, like the, you know, the powder place that, or the uh, anybody's doing anything where they're going to be reconfiguring something or affecting a a a large uh, area. It's, I mean, it seems to me that if you told them, you know, this is how, this is what we're looking for. Uh, and this is the kind of uh, streetscape we want to see. I think we could have it done as part of a lot of projects whenever there's something that is, you know, a a a major project or a a a good-sized project. Perhaps the way to go, and and this is, I thought, this is where uh, you were going or or one of um, the board had said something. The way probably to handle proportionate share for amenities like complete streets or something like that probably would be in um, having a a fund set up that was exclusively for something like that. And if it's, somebody comes in with a small project and it's not practical to say, go construct five hundred feet of this template. We could say, okay, well, with this was this number of square feet being proposed or whatever, whatever uh, measurement we used. You you owe a certain, maybe a certain amount of money to this account. Um, and we, you know, something like that. I could see something like that where, and we could say it's fair, you know, you're coming in, no, we understand you're you're doing a small project. It's not the same as coming in to doing two hundred and fifty units to your neighbor next door. You, i- i- is your neighbor next door is doing, um, that sort of thing. Uh, you know, we've talked about that with I had another, um, we had a similar topic a while ago with uh, um, should there be a fee to develop in the downtown overlay district as opposed, you know, an additional fee for developing in the downtown overlay district? You know, we talked about that at times. And um, our fees are very reasonable for that type of thing. Um, we did um, a, oh, what the heck do we call it in our rules or regulations a couple of years ago? We put in a for uh, it was like a a a proportionate fee towards our, I I think it was a conservation fund, but I can't remember the number that it was. Do you remember, Bill Crenshaw? It was like how we did that, it was one and a half.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was, that was a calculation based on town land, yeah.
But it was.
It was intended to be proportional based on existing conditions.
Exactly. So I mean, if if we want to go to the next step of police streets, we have the priority plan. Um, maybe we should look at, look at that and develop a um, and we could, I'm sure we could get that through and say, hey, you know, we 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 want to incorporate complete streets. Uh, here's how we would like to begin uh, an account, you know, that strictly for that. Now, I I will tell you this, this, I, you guys, um, we're all on the same page. I think for this, the 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 value of it to the community, the the overall benefit. There's something they call bike lash. Um, and um. People, there's a certain. Uh, there is a certain blowback to all this kind of stuff at times. It it doesn't seem like anybody could really be seriously against it. But it 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 may come up, but I I just, I point that out only because it's a um.
Uh against complete streets?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a policy, I'm 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 instituting talent policy, I, it's not up for discussion, I.
Right.
It's just not. Sorry.
I I think it's more of a pushback against. Over emphasizing certain elements of complete streets.
A- and it could be, Bill.
Complete streets is supposed to be for all ages and all abilities, and that does not mean that it's. Like, think only.
That's.
Not complete streets, that's.
An element.
That's a, that's a bike-only street, and that's obviously not the.
That's as bad as a car-only street.
Yes, right, exactly. Like, to me, this is AD, you know, this is, this is kind of more like ADA compliance, like it needs to be accessible for. All manner of people being able to access the storefronts. And I guess it's similar to that, but it's, you know, it's policy, so we're gonna follow policy. What what's gonna be helpful for me, Bill? Is that if we can, like, you're gonna keep hearing me say this, if we can, if there's a way to get ahead of these types of things. So that going into an app, in into some type of project or hearing. If if, I'll I'll just speak for myself, if I have a sense of. How, what we would like to see for complete streets in that area. A vision for it, then it helps me so that I know what are the components that are appropriate to ask at the appropriate level. That the applicant is at, so if there's a, if it's a small applicant. You know, maybe there's a small ask, a large applicant, a large ask, but if I have a vision, then I can tie it back. That ask back to the vision somehow. So for the projects coming up. You know, it may not, it obviously we don't have it yet. Um, but I bring it up because, you know, I want to move in that direction. Does that make sense, everybody? So that's, that's all I have for that. We're welcome to keep talking about it if others have questions.
Okay, I add one thing, one thing that um I'm just sending you guys.
Very quickly, Bill, just very. I could, go ahead.
Um, the um, I just, I'm sending you the guy, guys, the presentation for our complete streets right now. Part of the problem was, not a problem, part of, but part of the um. Restriction that we had was that it originally was focused on downtown. And um, there were some changes that people thought in downtown and and some, you know, there's always gonna be some you like, some you don't. And you'll see it in the presentation that that you're gonna get in a minute, but this is, this is a great example. I don't know if I've spoken to you guys about this before, but one thing I thought that would be. It would help a lot of, a lot of uh our major businesses, I think it would be a really cool thing, would be on Main Street, you know, we had that one. Between um Mason and uh McDonald's, you know, we got, we have two lanes there. And the first thing is. I always get complaints about the speed limit, that people are speeding down there. And they do, if you set out to be in, you know, they 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 goes faster and. People are like, I gotta get to work, I mean, because when we bring this up, or when it comes up, I get these letters, they're like. And and I'm like, you don't need to go forty miles an hour down. Six hundred yard stretch of Main Street. You know, a- and maybe, you know, like, kind of the vision, I think that would be appropriate, there would be bump out our sidewalks a little bit, keep the parking exactly where it is on the. On the um. On street parking, but just bump it out a little more and have some more activation for the sidewalk like that. And that's something that I've talked about with Justin, and uh we have a couple of hurdles to overcome uh before we start. You know, looking at anything like that and seeing what the public thinks about it, but um. That would be a good one to really gauge, you know, how people, if people. Recognize that we're planning for everybody, and yes, the pan- the pandemic in that sense was good because it did demonstrate the value of outdoor dining. And today, we met with, in like, you know, it's like the Antarctic out there today, but. We met with uh um El Huipo and Azakar about, you know, how they're gonna put their. Their outdoor dining um out this year because we can't close off. Um, the entrance to Nailor Court anymore off of Main Street. And we're trying to figure out, okay, where can we give them some space, when I give it to them, maybe from after. Last year, people were gonna rent any space for the town, but. Um, and things like that, and 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 having, you know. More sidewalk space or things like that would be beneficial all around, and that's a total complete streets element. You know, in the public uh realm, so I guess what I'm saying is that that. You know, i- i- if this is something, I I am one hundred percent with complete streets, I I get it, and if that's, we want to push ourselves on a priority, let's do it. Let's see what we can do.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. Um, I think, I think Jim's ready to file a motion to close the meeting.
No. I'm just waiting for a a gap in the conversation.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Well, uh, Chris, I don't want to stop with your uh, your commentary, but I have a a question and a comment uh for Bill Nemser.
I'm here.
About about another issue.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Bill, question, uh, up at uh one twenty-nine Parker. Uh, the uh developer has just about completed enclosuring, enclosing all of the dumpster areas. With three sides of a uh of a fence. Uh, aren't they gonna put up a uh a a front of the fence uh so that the blocks off the uh. The containers completely, uh, I don't know where you know the answer to that, but I'd like to get the answer to it.
I'm not sure, Jim, I can't recall, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, because they've done a nice job, but that uh from the, from the uh the uh fourth side, it looks unfinished.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will get you an answer, I can't recall offhand. Um, and um, that's, that's a issue we were talking about today in the other quarters, as a matter of fact, was screening dumpsters, so. Okay, I will, Jim.
Okay, and 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 a comment, uh, I had occasion to uh uh zoom in on the MAPC. Uh, strip mall conversion uh discussion today, did you see that, Bill?
I did, I got, I got most of it, the phone, phone was ringing in this, but I got just of it.
I was, I was there too, I saw it too.
You were, okay.
Yeah.
Did you notice the same thing I did? And let me tell you what I, what I noticed. Uh, we don't have any strip malls in Maynard, but we did have a uh a defunct industrial. Uh, site on one twenty-nine Parker Street that is now being developed. And the uh, the discussion re- today kind of revolved around uh much of it. On the Woburn Mall conversion that they did, uh, and I noticed that. Most of the stuff that they talked about converting in the Woburn Mall, we already have accomplished at one twenty-nine Parker Street. Did you notice that as well?
I I noticed that too, Jim, and I thought our project would be a better showcase than the Woburn. That Woburn Mall, I've been to that, and I I'm more impressed by our work, to be honest.
I I I thought the same thing, Chris, I thought we, that one twenty-nine Parker Street. Uh, i- is uh well, well ahead of the the curve, and uh we've done something. Uh, right in Maynard that um preceded what the MAPC wants to do in other malls, so. I thought that that we've done a good job.
This, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank, thanks always, Jim.
It's nice looking, I I I kind of, I really, I think Jim is a hundred percent right on that.
Open floor for anyone that wants to add comment, questions. Okay, so um. Interrupt me if you, if you, if you, I'm just going to. Um, go through our to-dos, so so Bill, please. Um, please, um, coordinate for a joint meeting with the select board. Um, for us in February, uh, we have two meetings in February, I'm fine with either of those being. Um, geared towards the um MAPC uh presentation. Um, I prefer sooner rather than later. Um, but I'll, I also am cognizant that I want more people there. So my primary goal would be to get as many people there as possible, particularly decision makers, so that we all can hear the same message.
I will do it on the uh the powder mill and um.
Yeah.
Also, uh, on the um. I I, I'll shoot the dates around, uh, and just make sure everybody's okay with it, I I don't expect. Um, any new petitions other than what I told you about that would be. That would hold us up, you know, from having that, and 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 it's, we do have, we have a window where I have to get it scheduled, so I'll take care of that the next day or two. And I'll let you all know.
Thanks, Bill. Was there any other to-dos?
Um, I would like you guys, if if you guys could um. I- if you could also uh. Wait, oh, make, well, like I said, circulate and keep remembering about the um, the home occupation. Um, survey, and what was the other one here? I had them, I nuts, I I went over it earlier, a joint meeting, there's update, made across, no. I think that's it.
Powder mill?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, good, right, please, any comments you have for powder mill? Um, if you haven't sent them in, if you send it to me, that would be much appreciated.
What what are you, what are you referring to?
The quarter study report I sent.
Quarter study.
Yeah, and the purpose, just to keep in mind, the purpose of it is to lay a foundation that we can build upon it. Uh, with using, we have our master plan, talks about the powder mill quarter and so on. Well, let's, now we've got, this is what our powder mill corridors. Uh, um. General vision is, vision is, and now with the, with the phase two plan, okay, here's how we're gonna do the nuts and bolts of it. And um, I think it would be so cool to have um. You know, when when you're applying for grants and say, you know, when they talk about, what have you done to do this, or whatever, we can say, boom, boom, boom. We've got, you know, this in place and um. And and it it's a pretty nitsy. Uh, it's a pretty nitsy um. Vision, I think, that we could come up with for that and and um. It that, I'm confident, I mean, I know it's a biggie, but you know what? How do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time?
Thank, thanks, Bill. Um, uh, my, my final thought is uh that we got some shade on the um. Home occupancy stuff in an email from one of our community members, and it's good feedback, but they they, the the feedback tied in ADUs as well. So I think we should just get ahead of it, and let's start figuring out how ADUs fits into the picture. And how to um, you know, coordinate and message this correctly so that. Our community understands the importance of how this ties into all the others, you know, all the other information we have about the future of the town.
Okay, and all of you were, everybody that was questioning me, was there really a new conservation agent, assistant planner? Planner hired, and you thought it was like Harvey the Rabbit, no, they're really, well, there she is, she just came on, it's Julia Miller, everybody. And she's off to, she hit the ground running and is a terrific addition. And I'm sure you're all going to have the opportunity to meet her soon, if you haven't. Um, but she's uh um knee-deep in the conservation and and and. Planning now, so she's met a couple of you, but um, we're thrilled to have her here, and I'm sure. When Bill's on vacation, which is coming soon, well, um, you'll have more of a chance to uh speak with her. And Julia, you have anything you want to say to the board?
Yeah, hi, everyone, sorry, I have been able to to come to your your meetings yet. And I'm hoping that I can, you know, attend the full meeting, your your second meeting a month. Um, and I actually just got off my Conservation Commission meeting about moving our special sessions to a different date, so, you know, I can. I can participate a little bit more in the planning board side of my job. Uh, but I'm excited to be working with everyone, and yeah, if you're, you're ever in Town Hall, want to come say hi. I'm right across from Bill.
She's right, she's right in the office across from me, she's being tortured daily, my, stuck with me.
Thanks, thanks, Julia, um, and I think it's a great thing that uh that you're, that the cons comm is gonna be. Potentially moving the meeting time because then you get to join this group, which is. By far the best committee or board in the town of Maynard. This is, and I'll say it differently. Cons comes great. This is where you want to be though on Tuesday nights, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm hoping that I can, you know, I I am currently working with some applicants um. Uh, for some planning permits, and I would love to be able to participate in their um. Public hearings, so that is my goal is, you know, as as we schedule things that I'm able to to have both, but. Uh, it just so happens that we lately, it seems like. I started hit the ground running and then we ended up having like three-hour meetings, uh, which I'm also trying to to bring back on.
And I I I, I understand you're gonna be joining us in two weeks, is that correct, for our meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Planning board, yes, so.
Yep.
That's great, Julia, thanks. Thank you. Anything else? Julia, Bill, anyone else on the board?
Good, good meeting, good group.
Jim.
Are you ready for me, Chris?
Yeah, Jim, you're up.
Mister Chairman, I would move to close the meeting.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll second the close of the meeting.
Nobody wants to go.
All in favor, uh, roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Uh, and I'm also, yes, that's five zero to close the meeting, uh, thank you, Annette, for participating, and I believe your first hearing is a voting participant. Um, thanks, Julia, for joining us tonight, uh, and great conversation, guys, really love this group, see you in two weeks.
Thanks, everybody. I'll see you in the, at eight AM, Mister Crenshaw, if you're still on.
I'll be there.
All right, bye, everybody, thank you so much, bye-bye. Thanks, Julia.
Good night, Doc.